Good morning, everybody, and welcome. My name is Michael Lundgren. I am a Coro Fellow in Public Affairs, working here at the President's Office. And I would like to thank you all for being here today as we celebrate this historic moment for the city of St. Louis. The inauguration of our newly-elected Board of Aldermen. At this time, please join me in welcoming our honored guests. Mayor Tashara Jones, the Clerk of the Board of Aldermen, Terry Kennedy, and local artist MK Stalling. And finally, please welcome our hosts for today's ceremony, Sal Martinez and Akasha Royale.
Yes, how are we doing, folks? That's not how we're gonna have an inauguration. That is not how we're going to have an inauguration today, right? Good morning, St. Louis! And I thank you.
Good morning, everyone! Are we ready to make history today? This is a historic day in the city of St. Louis as we welcome these wonderful new Alder persons to serve our community.
Yes, it is my high honor to introduce to you the President of the Board of Aldermen, because when you are green, you grow. This is Megan Green. Listen, they gave us this wonderful piece of paper, and we're gonna follow it today. At this time, we're going to introduce these duly-elected individuals that will be representing our city, starting with the Alderwoman of the First Ward, Anne Switzer.
It is now my pleasure to introduce the Alderman of the Second Ward, Tom Odenberg.
Now, I'm definitely not biased, but this is the best Alderman, because I live in his ward. This is the Alderman for the Third Ward, Shane Cohn.
My pleasure to introduce the Alderman of the Fourth Ward, Brett Noran.
This is Alderman of the Fifth Ward, Joe Volmer.
It is truly my pleasure to introduce the Alderwoman of the Sixth Ward, Daniela Velasquez. Viva Puerto Rico!
Alderwoman of the Seventh Ward, Alicia Sonia.
It is my pleasure to introduce the Alderwoman of the Eighth Ward, Kara Spencer.
This is Alderman of the Ninth Ward, Michael Browning.
It is my honor to introduce the Alderwoman of the Tenth Ward, Shameen Clark Hubbard. It is my honor to introduce the Alderwoman of the Twelfth Ward, Sharon Tyus.
Alderwoman of the Thirteenth Ward, Pamela Boyd.
All right, I'm gonna try not to cry here. It is my honor to introduce the Alderman of the Fourteenth Ward, Rashid Aldridge.
At this time, St. Louis, please stand for the presentation of colors led by Representative from Vascon High School, JROTC Wolverine Battalion. Thank you. At this time, we will have Kennedy Moore with "If You're Out There" by John Legend.
This message, wherever you stand, I'm calling every woman, I'm calling every man. We're the generation, we can't afford to wait. The future started yesterday, and we were already late. We've been looking for a song to sing, search for a melody, search for someone to lead. We've been looking for the world to change. If you feel the same, then go on and say, "If you're out there." Sing along with me, if you're out there. I'm dying to believe that you're out there. Stand up and say it loud, if you're out there. Tomorrow's starting now. No more broken promises, and no more calls to arms. It lets us love and peace that we're really fighting for. We can destroy hunger, we can conquer hate. Put down the arms and raise your voice, we're joining hands today, oh yeah. Search for Anita, Anita was me, oh yeah. We can be heroes, just go on and say, "If you're out there." Sing along with me, if you're out there. I'm dying to believe that you're out there. Stand up and say it loud, if you're out there. Tomorrow's starting now. Oh, now, now, now. If you're ready, we can shake the world, believe again, it starts within. We don't have to wait for destiny, we should be the change that we wanna see, if you're out there. Oh, if you're out there, and you're ready now, say it loud, scream it out, if you're out there. Sing along with me, if you're out there. I'm dying to believe that you're out there. Stand up and say it loud, if you're out there. Tomorrow's starting now. Now. Oh, yeah. If you're out there. If you hear this message, wherever you stand, I'm calling every woman, I'm calling every man. We're the generation, we can't afford to wait. The future started yesterday, and we're already late.
Thank you again, Kennedy. At this time, we will have MK Stalling for a lovely poem.
Before I begin the poem, I would just like to offer just a couple of songs. In 1954, the great poet Langston Hughes wrote an article for the Chicago Defender commenting on his experience in St. Louis. Throughout much of his life, he had experienced a Jim Crow St. Louis. But in the spring of '54, he said he saw something different. The places where he was banned to sleep, he could sleep. The places where he was banned from service, he received service. And in that moment, he said, "Based on this sermon by Reverend John Jasper, does the sun do move?" And so, this poem references Langston's idea and a bit of Reverend Jasper's work. When we are ready, we will move the sun. We've known sun chasing, feeling discontent with the sun on our skin in this place. We'd rather follow it west when it's late, or meet it east when it's early. We've known sun setting, coping with the first darkness on our last grasp at light. We've known sunrise promises at midnight, only to learn that sunlight comes with all deliberate speed. But I believe Langston when he said that the sun do move. He bore witness to the sun's movement in this city on the eve of Jim Crow's demise at St. Louis's population peak, and before urban renewal, second-class citizen removal, he saw a city glisten outside the shadow of separate but equal and the light of the immovable sun. Langston listened when Reverend John Jasper preached on Joshua that we won't need to chase the sun, that the sun won't set when darkness threatens. When our cause is just, it will brighten the twilight sky, and even the sun won't set if we believe. It nearly set on the Shelley family and George Vaughn until they moved the sun. It nearly set on Cardinal Joseph Ritter as he integrated his schools until he moved the sun. It nearly set on core protestors and white only counters until they moved the sun. Reverend Jasper preached that in our battles, when defeat threatens to sunset our hopes, we can stand up and command the sun to move if our cause is just and we believe. When Langston witnessed, on the eve of what Langston witnessed on the eve of Jim Crow's demise in this city, is the power of sun movers. And when we are ready, we will move the sun, and history will bear witness. Thank you.
That was truly beautiful. At this time, it's my pleasure to turn over the proceedings to Judge Michael Wolf.
Okay, I guess this is great. In a spirit of unanimity, you'll repeat after me, and you'll say your name and your ward number when it gets to the appropriate time. I take your name.
I'm Mr. Kennedy.
Of the city of St. Louis.
I'm Mr. Kennedy.
In the state of Missouri.
In the state of Missouri.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
By the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis.
By the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis.
To the position.
To the position.
Of member of the Board of Aldermen.
A member of the Board of Aldermen.
From the ward.
From the ward.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
To solemnly swear.
To solemnly swear.
That I have all the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
And I am not subject.
And I am not subject.
To any of the disqualifications.
To any of the disqualifications.
Named in the charter.
Named in the charter.
For the office or employment.
For the office or employment.
I am about to assume.
I am about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city.
Of the city.
That I will be influenced.
That I will be influenced.
Only by the consideration.
Only by the consideration.
Of fitness.
Of fitness.
In the appointment.
In the appointment.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Demotion.
Demotion.
Suspension.
Suspension.
Or discharge.
Or discharge.
Of officers or employees.
Of officers or employees.
That I will not expend.
That I will not expend.
Nor authorize.
Nor authorize.
The expenditure of money.
The expenditure of money.
Otherwise.
Otherwise.
Than for adequate consideration.
Than for adequate consideration.
And efficient service.
And efficient service.
To the city.
To the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
Congratulations.
And now, to give 15 blessings all at once, you can all take your seats.
That was quite an oath, wasn't it? And again, as I mentioned earlier, we're all here to celebrate history in the city of St. Louis. And it's my pleasure to introduce our next speaker, who knows more about the history of the city of St. Louis than anyone I know. He is the former Alderman of the Eighteenth Ward, and currently serves as the Clerk of the Board of Aldermen, Terry Kennedy.
To our mayor, to my classmate, our comptroller, to our President of the Board of Aldermen, it is my honor to be here today. To our newly-elected members of the board, and those returning, it is our pleasure to be here today. They say I want me to say a few things about history in five minutes, y'all. Five minutes, but we're gonna do our best. Let us remember, history is about remembering. It is about those important events, issues, and personalities that have changed our lives. The event that happened, the personality, the individuals who were involved, and the issues that caused those things to happen. That is history. Dr. John Henry Clark teaches that history is to a people what a mother is to a child. History helps a people understand who they are in the world at that time. History helps a people understand what they must do and what has been accomplished before them. We stand up on the shoulders of those who've come before us. All of their work, done and undone, tells us what we must do today. If we do not understand that history, we may go about the wrong work. So let us talk about it. St. Louis sits on the land that belonged to another group of people. It was colonized by a group of Europeans called the French. These individuals also involved themselves in slavery. Let's talk about history. This Board of Aldermen was created at a time when women were not considered to be a part. The word Alderman is Old English, and it means elder man. And that's what they meant. It was their intent to only have men on this body, and therefore, they only made one room, only one restroom for the members, and that was for the men. History teaches us the work we must do. If we do not understand it, we have no direction in which to go. If we deny it and do not tell the truth about it, we can go about the wrong work and misinterpret people's understanding and misinterpret people's actions. History is to a people what a mother is to her child. And so, this board that is coming up today has a great legacy to stand up on. Before you came a person like a Mary Ross, who was intent on having civil rights in this city. Or Joanne Wayne, who fought to make sure that there was inclusion at the airport for black vendors. Or you even had Geraldine Osbourne, who fought to make sure that the budget was correct and represented the needs of the people. Or you had somebody like Willie Williams. Or let me go to a Daisy Mae McFaulan, who leaned over to me when I was a freshman Alderman and said, "You know, Mr. Kennedy, if women controlled more things, you'd have less war." And I said, "Well, why is that?" She goes, "Because they don't want to send their children to go die." And so then, we now have a Board of Aldermen with women upon it. Each of you bring to that table what we need in this country, and that is simply not just the man approach, because a man approach causes a whole bunch of problems. So history helps us to understand who we are and what we must do. And so, in my short period, hopefully, I've given us some understanding. Now, that means then, do we have, as a board, the tenacity to make change? The understanding of what is the truth of history, and how we can use that history to make change today? I know the individuals on this board, and I know these individuals who are coming, some of them. And I know that you have the wherewithal to make it happen. History is to a people what a mother is to her child. Let us work to be the good parents and stalwarts of history that we are making today. Thank you.
Thank you once again. Phenomenal women have always been a part of my life, and it is my pleasure at this time to introduce to you a strong black woman, our mayor, Tashara Jones.
Oh, what a beautiful and historic day that we have before us today, the inauguration of our 14-member Board of Aldermen. Let's give our Alders another round of applause. I want to thank President Megan Green for the invitation to be with you today, and I'd also like to recognize comptroller Green this morning, as well as all of our other elected leaders here. If you are another elected leader, please stand or wave for me. I see Greg Daley and Maida Thompson, and the sheriff out in the audience. I also see Michael Butler, I saw him somewhere as well. The Board of Aldermen now reflects the diversity of our beautiful city. We have our first returning Asian Alderman, our first Latina Alderwoman, Both black and white, and eight out of 14 Alders are now women. This is what democracy looks like. This is what St. Louis looks like. It seems like a lifetime ago, but anyone who remembers when I first became mayor, my relationship with the previous board leadership was tense, to put it politely. But as the board navigated an unprecedented crisis in leadership last summer, Alderman Joe Volmer reluctantly, as he repeatedly told me, stepped up to offer stability. And under his leadership, for the first time since 2019, the Board of Aldermen passed a budget on to the mayor's desk early for my signature. And President Megan Green has done an excellent job preparing the board for reduction in such a short period of time, while also working to bring the public into the process. I know that she'll remain a strong partner in our work to cut red tape in city government and reimagine public safety. Since 2021, we've come so far, successfully allocating all $498 million of the American Rescue Plan Act dollars to help St. Louisans put food on the table, repair our roads, and make historic investments in disinfested neighborhoods, especially in North St. Louis. We've created the city's first Office of Violence Prevention while expanding community violence intervention programs in key neighborhoods to address the root causes of crime. And we passed the city's first Charter Commission and are getting started at updating the city's old and outdated governing documents. This is how government is supposed to work, working together where we can agree and disagreeing without becoming disagreeable. It is my sincere hope and prayer that despite our differences, we can enter this new era of city government with a sense of mutual respect for each other. Alderman Odenberg and I don't always agree, but I was proud to work with him last year to direct tens of millions of dollars to fixing our roads, our recreation centers, and other city infrastructure. And I had a great time joining him and his family at the lighting of the South Hampton Christmas tree. When historic rains, yes. When historic rains drench- When historic rains drenched St. Louis last summer, Alderwoman Boyd opened up her office for us to stage our response and help those impacted in Walnut Park. We ran into each other at the same community event last weekend for victims of violence. And I see firsthand her commitment to making St. Louis a safer place for our babies. Thank you, Alderwoman Boyd. And through it all, working with board members has taught me how to be more collaborative. Communication and cooperation are a two-way street, and we continue to learn from each other. I'm ready to work with the new incoming historic boards, ready to work with all of you to continue modernizing city government and working together to take advantage of the unprecedented resources at play in our city. First, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, which must be spent by 2026, and then the historic RAM settlement money, and in between any other grants that we are awarded from President Biden's Infrastructure Inflation Reduction and Safer Communities Act. Our share of the settlement, $250 million, remains in a bank and is growing in an interest-bearing account. I'm ready to work with the board president on a community-driven plan to spend it carefully and prudently. Whether you're stepping onto the board floor for the first time or the 400th time, whether you're joining us from the State House or the school board, I'm ready to work with all of you to deliver for St. Louis's families. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. Let's give the mayor another round of applause, please. It's now my honor to introduce the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis, who has kept St. Louis's finances in the green, the Honorable Darlene Green.
Good morning! Give it all honor to God. I am grateful, and I am honored to be here. I am humbled to be invited to participate in today's ceremony. First of all, congratulations to all of our newly elected members, our newly elected leaders, all the women Aldermen in the new 14 Board of Aldermen. Congratulations to the newly elected president of the Board of Aldermen, Dr. Meghan Green. In the new 14, that's what I'm calling it. Has a ring to it. It rhymes with green. Daley and I have that in common. We know what we're talking about, about rhyming. We have, as you've heard the mayor say, a truly diverse group of public servants. I congratulate you all for going through what you had to do in order to get elected. I also congratulate you for choosing the profession of a public official. I am reminded that the Bible says in a verse from Ecclesiastes, "There is nothing new under the sun." And to me, that is simply to say that everything old is new again. From the wisdom of Solomon, "Under the sun" means simply here on earth. And "nothing new" that refers to, in this context, that being a dedicated public servant is a worthy endeavor. Being a public servant for me has been my life's most rewarding work. And so I look forward to continuing this important work with you guys. Working to make our neighborhoods, working to make our schools and our business communities safer places to live, work, and play. Collaboration, cooperation, communication, and compromise are all key to improving on our delivery of city services. That we all deserve to have the adequacy of city service. It's also key to making St. Louis a safer place. Working together, we can introduce transformative public safety initiatives. We can streamline economic incentives to developers. We can support increasing positive outcomes for our public education and for housing and for healthcare. We can support rebuilding North St. Louis. And at the same time, we can improve housing all over this city. We can do this. It's going to take all of us to do this, working in collaboration, in communication, in cooperation, and sometimes compromise to move our city forward to its better place. And we know, we all want to get there, to a better place. So once again, congratulations to you all, and may God bless you all as we move into your new session tomorrow, or is it today? Now, I'm talking about some people who are not just ready, but they ready. So congratulations again, and thank you.
Thank you once again. I had the pleasure of introducing this woman when I was the 44th Miss Gay St. Louis America. I recently got a job promotion as the 49th Miss Gay Missouri America. And it is my pleasure to say, please rise. We only get these high honors a few times in life, so let's spend them while we've got them. This is your president of the Board of Aldermen. When you are green, you grow, Madam President, Meghan Green.
Good morning! I want to first start by thanking Mayor Jones, Comptroller Green, and all of my colleagues here at the Board of Aldermen, honored guests and members of the public for joining us today. The work we do at City Hall can sometimes seem invisible, but days like this remind us that behind every decision and every action is a dedicated and thoughtful team doing its best to make this city a better place. Five months ago, I acknowledged that my office and the Board of Aldermen had a momentous task ahead of us. Today, I'm happy to report that lawmakers came together to carry out the largest organizational change in our city's history. The foundation for a more strategic, efficient legislative branch is in place, and a new era of governance has finally arrived. I also want to commend the outgoing board for working digitally to invest our remaining ARPA dollars in the city infrastructure and public safety. Our final 27-member board was also instrumental in reestablishing the Civilian Oversight Board, a critical step toward rebuilding the relationship between our communities and the police department. And they created a process for regularly evaluating our charter, one that puts city residents in the driver's seat. This body of work signals a readiness to think long-term in service of today's St. Louisans and beyond. To my departing colleagues, many of whom I see today, our city is a better place because of your work. And I am humbled by your dedication, and all of us are grateful for your service. Those achievements brought us to a turning point in our city. A turning point that delivered the most diverse slate of municipal lawmakers in our city's history. Our new Board of Aldermen will have six black members, six white members, one Asian member, and one Latina member. Eight of the board's 14 members are women. So in addition, so in addition to she and a, we also have the Board of Alderwomen now. And we have a generational spectrum that allows us to tap into institutional knowledge while building a leadership pipeline of optimism for the future. Our voters elected lawmakers who look like them, lawmakers who share their experiences, and lawmakers who understand that change requires cooperation. I'm counting on the boards to remember that divisive strategies and political maneuvering are a disservice to the people that elected us. Our city is counting on you to model productive disagreement and compromise. In that spirit, we work together to define new rules for the board that we will debate later today. Rules that both value experience and make room for new perspectives. And I'm encouraged by that process, and I look forward to working in an environment that favors collective decision-making over grandstanding and self-interest. Accountable, honorable leadership is what our city deserves, and it needs it now more than ever. The Missouri General Assembly is working to dismantle our ability to self-govern. In the weeks ahead, the state legislature will vote to take away local control of our police department and put it in the hands of lawmakers in Jefferson City. Lawmakers who appear tough on crime but insist on inflaming the conditions that led to crime. Some state representatives are rushing toward the wrong side of history by erasing basic human rights for transgender Missourians. And in a race to the bottom, the Missouri House is punishing communities by defunding their public libraries. This isn't governance, it's fascism. It's anti-freedom of speech, it's anti-public safety, and it's antithetical to the principles on which this country was founded. Your elected officials have a responsibility to preserve your rights, and we can't do it alone. Politics is a team sport, and all of us have to be on the field to play the game. But while we work to defend our fundamental freedoms in Jefferson City, we can't lose sight of the everyday issues that we face at home. Violent crime is on our minds more than ever. Our fear, outrage, and resignation are justifiable. As your elected officials, we owe it to you to find a way through this, but we need a new approach. The current model of arrest and incarcerate isn't working. It costs taxpayers more in the long run, it does little to reduce recidivism, and it puts law enforcement in harm's way when other alternatives exist. It's not enough to be tough on crime, we must be smart on crime. We need to remember that perpetrators of violence are oftentimes victims themselves, and that poverty creates an inertia which prevents people from moving forward. We have to address these problems upstream before desperation gives way to violence. And it's imperative that we support our police officers by taking things off their plate. Our current approach overextends law enforcement, making it virtually impossible to prioritize calls in a way that meets the needs of residents. If we reimagine public safety, automate traffic enforcement that could keep our roads safe, and add non-police personnel that could be dispatched in non-emergency situations, we could have a safer St. Louis. The net result would be an increase in police availability and higher response rates. This year, my office is determined to work with Mayor Jones in building a comprehensive strategy and supporting many of the strategies that are already in place for addressing crime in our city, to keep St. Louisans safe, and to change the national narrative about the place that we call home. For many residents, we want our city to be safe so our children can thrive. They rely on us, and we must do everything we can to help them lead dignified, prosperous lives. But for many parents, despite their best efforts and through no fault of their own, these opportunities come at too high of a price. We need to help working families shoulder the financial burden of early childhood education. Not only because the cost is too high, but because young people can't break barriers or exceed expectations if their families don't have access to quality early childhood education. And parents shouldn't be forced out of a career because their take-home pay doesn't cover the cost of care. In the year ahead, my administration will dedicate itself to this issue and help providers and family create safe spaces for people who need us most. And for those without a place to live, we need to do more. We can do more, and we will do more. Our unhoused population is penalized, and at worst criminalized, for being vulnerable. An unhoused bill of rights will decriminalize homelessness, create safeguards to protect their dignity, and help them rebuild their lives. Beyond that, we have to address the cascading issues that lead to homelessness in the first place. We know housing instability and eviction put people on a path toward poverty. Renters are too often victimized by predatory landlords who raise rates and provide lower standards of living. A tenant's bill of rights will create eviction protections and right to counsel for renters, bringing the legal process for evictions into balance. And it is critical that at the same time, we examine the role that crippling medical debt plays in creating a cycle that puts tenants in untenable positions. To those whose only option is to rent, and to those who choose to rent, mark my words, this will be the year of the tenant. These issues are cyclical because they're complicated. And if we continue to apply one-dimensional thinking to three-dimensional problems, we will never make progress. We need an array of comprehensive, innovative reforms that solve these issues without diminishing an individual's humanity. And if we commit ourselves to this endeavor, I believe St. Louis can write its national reputation. We can be known, and should be known, for pioneering new approaches that reduce crime, alleviate disparities, and address poverty. And our best way forward is to do that work together, to build a stronger connection between the public and city government. To that end, the board is changing the way it does business. We have democratized public input and put more citizens in touch with lawmakers by making virtual hearings permanent. New software will make searching archives, tracking active legislation, and reviewing board meetings even easier for the public. And beyond increasing transparency and access to information, the board will be creating a portal where residents can submit their ideas for improving our cities and policies that they've seen work in other places that they want to see us incorporate. And very soon, this brand of collaborative governance will guide the process for deciding how we invest the RAM settlement funds, the promise and potential of which can't be overstated. Directed toward the right initiatives, these funds can and should create generational change for residents in our city. And for everyone who has experienced roadblocks at City Hall, my office will be establishing a red tape commission to thoroughly review past policies and practices to modernize city government. city government. We need to remove barriers that make it easier to open a business in Ball winner Belleville than in St. Louis, starting with an overhaul of our antiquated liquor licensing process that puts new restaurants that puts new restaurants out of business before they can even open their doors. It's imperative that we update the city's minority contracting and procurement practices to guarantee that our development workforce and contracts reflect the diversity of our city, just like our board does today. And most importantly, we will address our city's housing crisis by reviewing the zoning code and encouraging the development of affordable housing. If developers want a deal, they need to ensure that low and moderate-income St. Louisans have access to housing that they can afford. And for this group of lawmakers, the clock starts now. The disparities in our community have been centuries in the making, and change won't happen overnight, so we need to work together with common purpose, a shared conviction, and an unyielding urgency. I'm confident that this board will work in good faith to give St. Louisans what they've asked for. Finally, before we make our way to the chambers for our first meeting, I want everyone to know that my door remains open to anyone who wants to make our city a better place. And more importantly, I want the people of St. Louis to know that political gamesmanship is over and good governance is back at the Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Madam President. Board of Aldermen, one last time, will you please stand for me? Will you please turn around? This is your city. These are your people. These are your bosses. These are the folks that are in your community. I want to leave you with one last thought, and then we will get to work. Whenever I won Miss Gay Missouri America, I was asked about what defines courage, and I said that courage, no, 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 don't sit down yet. Courage is making it through the uncomfortable, making it through the crimes, through the potholes, through the liquor license that takes too long. It is through all of the emails and the calls and the protests and the people banging on your doors. I see 14 courageous people in front of me. I see one heck of a courageous woman behind me. Please be the courage that our city needs. Please. Now, St. Louis, I think I'll only get to do this once. Board of Aldermen, it's time to go to work. Please enter the chamber. City of St. Louis, Missouri, thank you for coming to this historic day. Thank you for celebrating these fabulous people, and thank you for utilizing your voices.